...map and there's information about the program.
Okay, what if they have questions?
They could call 252-551-1551 and ask the question, or they can go to GUC website as well.
Hello, everyone. I am Mayor Pro Tim. Monica Daniels. I would like to call the April 14th, 2025 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'd like to call GUC Chair Lindsey Griffin to call the GUC Board.
And Lindsey Griffin and I would like to call the GUC Board to order.
Okay. I would like for the city clerk to call. Oh, I was looking for you. Call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Connolly has let us know that he will not be here tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
And we'll have a roll call for the GUC Board members.
Okay, Chair Griffin.
Here.
Chair Gardner.
Here.
Secretary Blunt.
Commissioner Geiger.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Cowan is absent. Commissioner Godley. We have a quorum. We will now move for the approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, any recommendations?
No changes.
And GUC, we'll call. Any amendments or, let's see, where are we here on this thing? Okay. I guess I'll call for a vote to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, public comment period.
You need a vote on that.
Did they?
Greenville members? Do we get a vote in a second? We need a vote with Greenville Utilities?
I made a motion. I say.
Second. Okay, all on paper. Okay.
And the council needs a vote as well.
We voted first.
I move to pass the agenda as per suggested.
All those in favor?
I hear no objections, so motion passes six zero.
Okay, now. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be subject to public, of public hearings conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order, registered until the allocated 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allocated 30 minutes expire. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Don Cavallini is our first registered speaker. Mr. Cavallini, you have three minutes to address the council members and commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Don Cavallini. I'm the co-chair of Pitt County Coalition Against Racism. And I thought, because this is unique. I think there are several times in a year, two or three, when both the City Council and the Greenville Utilities Commission meets. I know it's pretty ordinary, but I thought it gave us an opportunity to bring, once again to your attention, necessity of transparency and the accessibility of information to the public. My understanding is Greenville Utilities is a public service. We, as consumers, know full well how important that service is, especially when there's a natural disaster and we lose power. You really appreciate something when you don't have it. So in the fall of 2021 and the winter of 2022, we in Pitt County dealt with Compute North, a Minnesota-based crypto mining company, which at first planned to site their noise polluting facility very close to Belvoir Elementary School. I have distributed copies of a article written by Lisa Sore. I hope you all have that in front of you. And I give it to you because, and I direct your attention to the latter two paragraphs, because it is the responsibility of the City Council to hold Greenville Utilities accountable, since it is a public utility. And this is an example, unfortunately, when they did not do so. A City Council that was of a different, not as it is today, it's a different City Council today. So, but we need to learn from this so we don't repeat it. And I just read one thing. And this was kept from the public. And I understand that at times it's necessary for a site that might be considered for development so that competitors don't come in and intervene in ways that disrupt the whole process. However, this particular occasion of secrecy was not in the public interest. And I hope that it is not repeated. The person in charge of Greenville Utilities, quote Tony Cannon, "We were optimistic about this project and the potential investment in our community." Of course, what happened was Compute North paused their plans.
And that's time.
The community opposition was so great that it was dispensed and they went bankrupt. I just asked the City Council to keep in touch with what Greenville Utilities is doing, to monitor them. You have representatives on that board. They need to be accountable to the whole council and to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavallini.
Thank you, Mr. Cavallini. Our next registered speaker is Mr. Greg Rubel. Mr. Rubel, you have three minutes to address the City Council and Commissioners.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am.
All members, commissioners, and staff. Customers and citizens have a problem and your collective help is required to resolve it. Communication with both of your entities is often cumbersome. Emails and phone calls repeatedly bounce from person to person, leading to frustration and irritation. I have reached out and discussed the following concerns with City and GUC staff. Some key issues include, there is no contact information for the Board of Commissioners or the GUC management on the website. Hopefully, this is an oversight and that it is being corrected. Additionally, in regard to communication lines, the communication companies, be it Optimum, MetroNet, T-Mobile, Bright Speed, or others consistently do not comply with line attachment standards. Lines consistently droop, they are cut, are incorrectly routed.
Excuse me.
Who checks behind these subcontractors? Who checks behind their work? Apparently, no one. Otherwise, any issues could be corrected before the public needs to track down someone to resolve their problems. One solution should be, or one solution would be strengthening the agreements between the communication companies, the City, and GUC, clarifying the standards, the terms, expiration dates, the responsibilities of each of the communication companies. Strengthening the agreements, establishing effective penalties are necessary to attain real responsiveness from them. Another would be to charge at least two individuals from both the City and GUC and list or provide a map of the communication line, the communication line engineers and the areas which they oversee to achieve a much better outcome or outcomes for all those concerned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody'd like a copy, later I got it.
We appreciate it.
Mayor Pro Tim, there are no more registered speakers.
Okay. We will now move on to new business. Mr. Manager, please present the first item. Oh, that's right, the allocated 30 minutes are not up. Dr. Newman.
Thank you and hello, everyone. My name is Yoshi Newman. And I'm here in two capacities. One is Vice Chair of the Greenville Environmental Advisory Commission and the other is interested community member. So I first want to draw attention to GUC's pamphlet that was recently put out and commend them particularly for the water and wastewater actions and infrastructure that they have put in place. I think this is a really fine way to ensure good water quality for the city of Greenville. I think it also then points to the importance of land development decisions that City Council makes because if there's continued development in flood-prone areas, for which we have a lot of, then we risk reduced, increased sediment, increased nutrient load, and other pollutants that will make ensuring high water quality standards for the citizens of Greenville. So I don't know if any of you have ever seen the water that comes off of a car wash. My understanding is that water does not go into the stormwater system. But if you take a look at the water, that's the kind of water that we get in runoff from cars and trucks and other vehicles from parking lots and just round-town sources. So I also want to address some concerns that the Environmental Advisory Commission has stated on multiple occasions to City Council and has been addressed here many times by several people, including myself and Dr. McKinnon, the Chair of the Commission, which is what we would like to see is increased transparency from GUC. So as earlier stated by Mr. Cavallini, this is a publicly owned utility, which I think, at least I interpret that to mean they are responsible to the citizens of Greenville. Now I'll point out one thing that leads to a lack of trust in the public. And, you know, this has to be brought up over and over again because we're working with the same leadership and in some cases, the same GUC Commissioners, which is that the crypto mining debacle, I have to call it that. You know, there was a part of that, that on the part of GUC was incredibly presumptuous and arrogant, which was before the vote had been taken by City Council or County Commissioners, Compute North had millions of dollars of equipment parked or, you know, located out at the then GUC facility on Mumford Road. And I went out there and looked at that. And I thought, why is this here? It's as if, you know, the vote had already been taken and this was all a done deal. And I think it was in the minds of the people who were making these negotiations out of the public eye, perhaps thinking that it really was a good move for the community. But I think as the community came forward with all the reasons that we felt it was not good for Greenville, that it pointed to, again, this lack of transparency and just completely overlooking the desires of the community for which GUC is charged to serving. So I think we need to look at how we can implement perhaps a more regular reporting to City Council. I think historically, City Council has been pretty passive in terms of their role of engaging with GUC and being more aware of operations. Not that we expect Council to run GUC. That's not Council's job. That's GUC officials and Commissioners. But at least to be more aware and in terms of the advances that have been documented here is to continue to track those and make sure that the strategic plan, whatever that might be, and I don't know, I, you know, I don't, maybe that's published. But anyway, that there's some regular monitoring of exactly what's happening and the public is aware of how these operations are taking place. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to which to speak? You have three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to new business. Mr. Manager?
Item one, approval of the minutes from the September 23rd, 2024 Joint City Council Greenville Utilities Commission meeting.
Approve the agenda. A motion?
Uh, some of.
All in favor?
Aye. Seeing none opposed, motion passes six zero.
Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Some move.
Peter, second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Next item?
Item two, consideration of market adjustment merit allocations for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And I'll call on staff for presentation.
Good evening.
Evening.
Each year, GUC and the City do an evaluation. We review our competitive pay posture of our pay plan, our joint pay plan. And this is to ensure internal equity, is also to determine if we are competitive with the market. This helps us both with retention of our current employees and also with recruitment. To do this assessment, we rely on published market surveys and we also do private sector and public sector benchmarks. The chart that's in front of you is a chart showing the published surveys that we use. Those are seven reputable organizations. And you'll see that their projected wage increases all track along pretty consistently with each other. There is a 3.8% average among them. You'll also notice at the top of the list is Catapult. That is a North Carolina-based company. We include that one specifically because there are so many North Carolina companies that are part of that survey. We also do public sector and private sector benchmarking. For the public sector, there were 26 public sector organizations that included municipalities and utilities that were surveyed. Nineteen of those responded with what their actual increases were for fiscal year 24, 25. And that average was 4.6%. Three of the 26 organizations responded regarding their projections for the 25, 26 fiscal year and their average projections are 4%. In terms of private employers, there were 19 local private employers that were surveyed. Four of those employers responded and they indicated that for fiscal year 24, 25, the average increases that they gave was 3.4%. Those same four employers responded with their projections for fiscal year 25, 26, the average there being 3%. This chart at the bottom does show you the data that I just shared with you in terms of projections for fiscal year 25, 26. The chart above it in white also shows five years' worth of actual data for Catapult, as well as the public sector and the private sector benchmarks, and also what the City and GUC did for market and merit increases. And I think what's notable here is that for those five years, GUC and the City did lag behind the projections or the actuals of the others. It is therefore recommended that we make a 4% pay adjustment for fiscal year 25, 26 to be applied as deemed appropriate by each entity.
Discussion, council, or motion? Or questions for staff?
I have a quick question.
Councilwoman.
Can you go back to 23, 24? I should remember, but I don't. Why were we so far behind everybody that year?
Are you talking about what we offered, the 2%?
It was the availability of the budget at the time.
You may recall, that's the year that we implemented the TRUP, the results from the TRUP.
Okay.
So funds were limited.
Okay, got it, got it. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you. I'd make a motion to approve if a motion is in order. Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blackburn, second by Councilwoman Willis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Some move.
Motion passes six zero.
Make a motion to GUC Board? Any discussion? Questions? If none?
Motion to recommend the 4% pay adjustment.
Thank you, Dylan. All in favor?
Mr. Manager?
Item three, consideration of a salary structure adjustment for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
So as we were just alluding to, in 2022, GUC and the City together hired a consultant, Siegel, to conduct a compensation study. As part of that study, they determined that our pay structure, pay structure being the pay grades from minimum to maximum at each rate. They determined that our pay structure was lagging behind significantly and appropriate adjustments were made. To prevent this from happening again in the future, Siegel, the consultant, recommended that going forward, we review the pay structure annually. So as part of this year's preparation, we again did that. We use World at Work and their projection is for the salary structures to increase by 2.5%. It is therefore the recommendation of the committee to, in order to maintain market competitiveness, for us to adjust the pay structures by 2.5% for fiscal year 25, 26.
Any questions for staff?
Of course I do, you know I do.
Councilwoman Blackburn?
Just looking, and I know we've talked about this before, but a 4% increase, but then just this adjustment of 2.5%. I know part of the reason we do this is to keep from having that wage compression and make sure that folks that are just starting with us start at an equitable level. 2.5 and 4, do they, is this something that we just, I know we're going to do it every year, but why the difference?
This is specifically about the pay ranges. So this 2.5% would only apply to the ranges. So you have a minimum and a maximum of each pay range. And this would be just to adjust that pay range to keep up with the market.
Just to shift the range?
The only people actually impacted by that would be if somebody was currently sitting at the bottom of the range, for instance. If we did, if we shift the range and we don't shift their pay, then they would fall below the range.
So they'll get the 4% plus the 2.5% if they're at the bottom of the range?
Well, the 4% is applied as each organization deems appropriate. So part of that is often an across-the-board increase and it's not the full 4%.
Okay. So the 2.5%, it's like the whole thing's going to shift up 2.5%. Then there are also the increases across, that may be across the board that can be applied however the organizations choose to apply them.
Yeah, so the other four that was just approved, that's a combination of market and merit. And each organization determines how much of that to do as market versus merit. Thank you.
Any further questions? A motion?
To approve?
All those in favor?
Aye. Hearing the opposition, motion passes six zero.
GUC Board, can I get a motion to approve this salary structural adjustment?
Some move.
Thank you, Peter. Second.
A second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Manager?
Item four, consideration of 401K employer contribution.
Good evening. Before you is a chart that shows the 20 largest North Carolina municipalities and what they, as an employer, contribute towards their employees' 401K accounts. You can see Greenville is listed there or highlighted there in green. And we're currently, the employer contribution for the city of Greenville and Greenville Utilities is currently 3%. You may recall that last year you all approved the 3%, which was a huge increase from our flat dollar amount that was $40 a pay period. So that was a great incentive for our employees, a great improvement in our benefits. You can see even at 3%, we are still, the City and GUC, we're still slightly below average. The average is 3.86% and again, we're at 3%. And what we did to illustrate from a compensation perspective was starting at $35,000 and then in increments of $15,000 up to $80,000, what that 401K employer contribution looks like in terms of dollars for employees. So from a dollar perspective, you can also see that the City and GUC, the contribution is less than the average, as shown there. So that's a good pictorial. And what we're wanting to do or asking the boards to do, the committee has approved it, is to do something a little different than what you all approved last year. Last year, you all approved the City and GUC taking a conservative approach with increasing the employer 401K contribution. Again, you approved from $40 a pay period to 3% per pay period and that applied to all of our full-time and select designated part-time employees. It excluded specifically sworn law enforcement because by North Carolina general statute, those employees receive 5%. So the plan was to have an additional incremental quarter percent increase each fiscal year until a 3.75% employer contribution was reached. That's funding permitted. And then both organizations would reassess market competitiveness once 3.75% was met. Well, the outcome of the 3% employer contribution has impacted both organizations very positively in terms of being able to recruit talent, in terms of being able to retain high-quality talent. And so, again, that's a, that's a great thing. And what we're wanting to do is keep that momentum going. Instead of sort of taking a conservative approach, we're asking that you all approve a change from 3% per pay period to 4% per pay period effective fiscal year 25, 26 for full-time and select designated part-time employees, again excluding sworn law enforcement because they already receive a 5% contribution so that we maintain market competitiveness. And then next year, looking forward, increasing it from 4% to 5%. That way, we will be both sworn law enforcement employees on the City side as well as general employees will both be receiving the same 5% employer contribution. And then GUC employees, of course, also would be receiving the 5% employer contribution towards their 401K accounts.
Councilwoman Blackburn? Do you have a question?
I actually do not have a question.
I thought I saw your hand up.
Yes, no, no, no.
Okay, okay. I have a question. So this means it will not come back before us next year, that it will automatically go into effect, correct?
Yes, with your vote here today.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Cannon, could you confirm for me, I believe this is true, that the budget workshop, the numbers we've been looking at include this?
It does.
This year's budget, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it does.
Any further questions? Can vote for the city?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blackburn, second by Councilman Robinson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing the opposition, motion passes six, zero.
GUC board, motion to increase the compensation contribution.
So moved.
Thank you, Dylan. Second.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Manager.
Item five, 25, 26 pay study.
Okay. We touched just briefly a few minutes ago on the pay study that was, or the True Up that was conducted two or three years ago. But historically, the city and GUC, we've conducted a comprehensive classification and compensation study in 10-year cycles with the True Up conducted at the five-year mark of each of those cycles. The last study was scheduled to be conducted in 2020. But we all know what happened in 2020 with COVID. And so that time period certainly was not conducive to a comprehensive study. So the study was paused and never resumed. We did, though, in March of 2022, the city and GUC embarked upon a limited True Up study just so that we wouldn't lose so much market traction. And also because we were experiencing some issues with recruitment and retention. The results of that True Up study were implemented effective January 1st of 2023. Those, the results of that True Up study has certainly helped both organizations in terms of recruitment and in terms of retention. But we still have challenges, particularly with difficult to fill positions. And the market, the labor market post-COVID, you know, is still continuing to affect us. And the labor force participation rates aren't the same as they were pre-COVID. So we recognize all of those things. And we recognize the impact that those things have had to both the city and GUC with the overarching goal to ensure alignment of job classifications with current market rates so that the city and GUC continue to attract and retain top talent. The action being requested is that you all approve a comprehensive classification and compensation study for implementation July 1st of 2026 because it will take several months, up to a year, for us to complete such a study.
Thank you. Any questions or motion? Councilwoman Blackburn.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you so much for that presentation. Is this something where we do an RFQ or an RFP?
Yes, it is.
To do this study? And then what approximately is the cost of it? I know it says it's a big undertaking.
Yeah, and it is depending on the consultant. You know, it's not unheard of for it to be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, that's definitely expected. Thank you.
What did we spend on the last study we did in '20?
In terms of implementation?
What was the cost of the study?
That was about a hundred thousand, I think.
I think it was, I want to say it was sixty.
Sixty somewhere.
That was a limited cost study.
Thank you.
Motion. Any more questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blackburn, second by Councilman Scully. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing the opposition, motion passes six, zero.
GUC seek a motion for approving the comprehensive study.
So moved.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
Second, thank you, one. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Manager.
Have no more items. Out of bullets.
Okay. Then we will call for a motion. Councilwoman Willis.
If you would appease me, I wanted to go back and revisit the comments that were made during public comment. I think it's important, as they mentioned, to have that transparency and accountability. And so, incidentally, thinking, just thinking, how can we make that happen? How can we bring that about? I am just as concerned about recruiting talent and retaining talent and doing pay studies and assessing salary structures as I am about public concern, public perception, being transparent and accountability. So I would propose a motion to request that GUC develop a strategic plan to bring about that accountability and that transparency. And perhaps it could be brought back to us by the next, by the next joint meeting that we have. I'm not sure when that was. I was trying to look on my calendar to see when it was, but I feel like we meet quarterly. So that would be my motion on the table to address the things that we heard in public comment.
So how would that work in reference to GUC, Mr. Manager, or Mr. Cannon?
So we do have a strategic plan. The charter, the state law that set up Greenville Utilities, that law says that the board has the full control and supervision of the utility. Phil, if I'm interpreting this wrong, you need to correct me. So we will share our strategic plan with you, which does address a lot of what your concerns are. We do hold public meetings. All of our meetings are open to the public. All of our minutes are available on our website. All of our agendas are available on our website. So to allege that there's not transparency there probably just don't understand that there actually is.
And you know, I appreciate you saying that. But one thing I've learned being in these seats is that the perception of the public is key as well. So even if there are attempts to, or if it's in the bylaws, if it's in your structure, if it's not a perceived transparency, if the public doesn't feel like they can come to your meetings or if there's not a public comment time during your meetings, then it may kind of fall flat. So what I'm proposing is putting some teeth behind it and making sure that our citizens know that, you know, you guys are open to hearing their concerns. This is what we're doing, and making sure that they understand that. It feels like they don't understand that or have concerns.
Councilwoman. Will that be all, Councilwoman Willis? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Blackburn.
Since there's a motion on the floor, just so we can discuss what Councilwoman Willis is proposing, I'll go ahead and second it. I don't want to put words into anyone's mouth or to sort of represent a misunderstanding, but what I believe I hear is something that will increase the public's sense of being engaged with or being more fully informed of what's happening at GUC. Do I have that right?
Yes.
And it sounds to me, Mr. Cannon, that what you're saying is we have that, we do that. And what I'm suspecting is it's just not being translated. It's not perhaps being put forth enough into the public. And so I think it's reasonable to say, well, let's, can we, because we're all the time, this is what we're here for tonight. We're all the time looking for ways we can do things better, ways we can improve. And we all work for the public. And I know there's an incredible amount of dedication amongst city staff and amongst GUC staff. And I've seen that, and I believe that. The caliber of employees that work at GUC is exceptional, as it is with the city. So I don't think there's any question of not being dedicated to the public and to public service. What, again, if I understand correctly, what I think is being asked for here is to sort of heighten the efforts to bring this information to the public. I know you have the newsletter that comes out in the bills. I read them every month. I love those. Maybe there's more we can do. Maybe we can have forums. I heard Councilmember Willis mention public comment. Again, this is just, you know, looking in what we do with city councils, we have public comment at the start of every meeting. I think that's an excellent opportunity for the public to come. And they feel invested when they're able to speak at every meeting, at the start of every meeting. That says to the public, we value you. We want to hear from you. We're here for you. And that's something that I think for city council is incredibly important. There's some other things, and again, Councilmember Willis has asked for a strategic plan, maybe, you know, outlining what you're doing, outlining what you might, could do more.
So I guess I want clarity for your motion. It was to create a strategic plan, but he's saying there's already one in place. So what is that? Oh, Mr. Attorney.
Strategic plan for transparency. So maybe it's just pulling out of the existing strategic plan and taking a look at that.
Let's hear from our attorney.
It's just in terms of a point of order, the both joint boards approved the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. And I love the view that it would be inappropriate to just take up a new item that's not even on the agenda now. Of course, council could discuss this issue. It could be something you could direct the manager to bring back at a May meeting to talk about exactly what the issue is. It could be on the agenda for May for council to consider. It could be on a future agenda for GUC to consider. But I don't think it would be appropriate to add an item to the agenda that the agenda has been approved.
It has happened before in the comments.
Let me take a step further. I don't think you have authority to direct us to do that. If you want to request us to do that, I think that's perfectly acceptable. But it not being on the agenda, it's not a proper item for consideration.
I know that the council has taken up items that were brought up in the comments and voted on them and moved forward with them.
At our council meetings, but not at the joint meetings, is that correct? Okay, so we can add, what you're saying is we can add it to the agenda for our May to discuss it?
Council could discuss it, could direct staff to bring back an item regarding this matter of transparency, et cetera, at the May meeting of the council. But it would not be appropriate to do it off the cuff right now.
And I find that honestly incredibly disappointing now that we're all here together, we're all hearing the same thing. The reason that it prompted my thought was because I remember Mr. McKinney presenting before us from the Environmental Advisory Council and speaking about fossil fuels and things like that and saying that he was not able to, I said, he mentioned about not having GUC's ear and not being able to share the information to them. And so I said, oh, well, I think that the next time that we're all together may be a perfect opportunity. And so I just feel like that is incredibly disappointing that we're all here now, we've all heard, but legally, I don't have the authority, as you said, or the opportunity to propose something for us all to take thought of, even though that's what the public is.
Well, we can still have that discussion, but at our May meeting.
Oh, all of us wouldn't be present.
You mean, I sense in GUC and, okay.
First off, the reason we have an agenda is so the public can be aware of it, so staff can study it, so it can be a full presentation of everything that we want to consider instead of just, let's do it today, tonight, because we want to do it. It's not how things work, they're procedural rules. And so that the city can respond, staff can respond, GUC can respond. Instead of just kind of like, we hear he's got a plan, I know what goes on. All these meetings are advertised. Every single one, I'm on the website. If you want to go see them, go see them. Enjoy it. Come out there, enjoy it, and see what goes on. But to come up here and propose something to add to an agenda that hadn't been briefed, hadn't been studied, and with implied implications to become forward, it's very inappropriate. And say, because we're city council, we're here together, that's not how we do business. We've had two large tell us it's inappropriate. And so we can't. And the whole purpose, I'm not trying to be critical of the idea. I'm trying to be critical of the procedure. We have to have a procedure so that everybody can have a full presentation, so the public can weigh in on it instead of us doing it because we talk about full disclosure. If we were to decide something like that tonight, public would say, well, we didn't have a chance to even know about you were going to do that. So that's my comments.
I'm sure the council is aware that the item of the sports complex was brought up in the council comments one night. And some of us had never heard of it before, and it was actually voted on that night. So it's not unprecedented for an item to come up in the comments in this way.
Councilwoman Scully.
I'm just curious how we should proceed. Is that motion null and void?
Again, a point of order. I don't think it's appropriate to just add something to the agenda and vote on it, but it's not on the agenda. Again, council could discuss this at its May meeting. It could ask also that GUC take this up at a future meeting. And under the open meetings law, you could schedule a special meeting with the joint. I know the board only meets, I think, twice a year, but you could schedule a special meeting in the future if that was the will of both bodies. But it's not appropriate just to add this to the agenda at the end of the meeting.
So we can do that, because if we're talking transparency, we would want others to have the opportunity. Maybe Mr. McKinney wants to come back again and share his thoughts. I mean, I don't know, but that's something that we know we can discuss in the future. What we want that to look like as we work together.
Do we need a motion perhaps to table until May?
Well, no, she can just, we can just have it, agendas are not out yet.
Because we have a motion on the floor. I didn't know if we needed to do something with the motion.
Does that motion die?
Council could direct staff to, you don't have to do this in the meeting, but you could direct the manager to bring something back regarding this item at a May meeting or a June meeting. You don't have to take action on that tonight. It can still be on a future agenda. You just need to direct staff to do it.
I can.
You could add something to the agenda in the future.
So does that motion die?
Yes, I don't think the motion is in order. I don't think you can proceed to adjournment, consider adjournment.
Okay, okay. And that we shall do. So I will call for a motion to. Second. Motion made by Councilman Robinson, second by Councilman Scully. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
Okay, Greenville Utilities, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, call in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.